Call the meeting to order. Let's start with the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Great. We've got a full agenda tonight, so a little later on, we'll have a presentation from some folks here that are to talk about accounting and business services. But before we get into that, let's go through some business items. The warrants are all signed. Warrants and bills are signed. Approval of the agenda?
Make a motion. We approve the agenda.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Okay. Minutes of the last meeting?
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of the last meeting of January 18th.
I'll second that.
I'm going to abstain because I was not there. All in favor? Good. Town administrators update. Jennifer?
First is for the Mary Grant liaison, which is today. We have an individual that's interested in joining, so we'll schedule an appointment. Assuming the board can keep going with the process in hand, we'll schedule a one-on-one with you and the individual, and possibly move the date forward for next week.
Good, good.
The rec committee has asked if they could do chairings here in this room on the next few Sundays. Do you have any concerns with that?
Chairing?
Chairing.
Go team?
Have we had a chairing before?
Yep.
Is this new? They do it.
The school must be unavailable.
Right, so they just need somebody to practice.
I mean, the liability wise would be no different. Kids are fine with labor, so they'll bring the mats.
Okay, they'll have the equipment here.
They know mats and stuff.
Yeah.
It's fine, fine with me. Yeah. Thanks for asking.
I spoke to staff, and for a couple of different reasons that we really don't need to get into detail, we're looking to swap the Saturdays. The town halls open in March. Generally, we'll open the second and third because of Shapley Town meetings, some other things going on with vacations. We're looking to open the first and last Saturday in March. You want that advertised? Are you okay with that?
I'm fine.
I think they'll have a month's notice, so people can plan accordingly. I don't see I have any problem with that.
Monday, February 6th, the auditor is going to be here at 10 o'clock to finish up. He's calling some last-minute issues or cons- I don't know what it is.
Yes, questions?
Questions.
Yes.
So he's going to be here at 10. And Tom, will you join me for that?
Yes, I will.
Next is the notable events from the York County Sheriff's Department, very quickly, January. There was arrest in Acton, a 34-year-old, on four different warrants, all vehicle-related. There's a child advocacy sin issue going on in Acton about a child's grandfather that they're dealing with. January 5th, a gentleman from Shapley was operating after suspension. One interesting one that you guys might have seen on the news, back in 1997, someone in Acton was reported missing, and through DNA, they were just able to confirm this female victim from Acton through DNA all these years later. So that was just solved. January 13th, there's an issue on Royal Coachman Way in Shapley that apparently there's some financial scams going on. January 13th, another summons of a 48-year-old Acton resident for failure to report an accident. Sorry, I was going through the names, so I'm not reading them aloud. The 19th, an individual from Shapley for violating a conditional release. January 21st, we arrested someone in Shapley for another warrant of aggravated, utter famous criminal mischief. January 22nd, arrested someone in Acton for failure to appear, operating with influence in Acton. January 22nd, traffic stop in Acton turned up a felon they've been looking for in Saco. And then another one, January 28th, Sheriff King would like you to know that he attended a training class on active shooters at county fairs.
Okay.
Last thing to talk about is tax liens. So as you know, we recently, the last 30, 45 days, we've been sending out foreclosure notices for the 2020 taxes. As we all have heard, the mail was very slow, and we've seen this problem across the state with municipalities. We send out impending foreclosure notices 45 days in advance as required by law. And one of them, we tracked them through the post office on the daily. The day to pay, the last day to pay was January 31st. On January 26th, the post office finally notified us that it was not picked up. It was refused. We did contact Sean Samborn, Deputy Samborn, to go over and try to make contact. They left us with two business days with this individual. It is land-only in Acton. The individual's living in East Lebanon. He was not able to make contact based on his schedule and the two days' notice. So, I mean, the law says that we have to give them approval that they received notice. So, in this case, you've got two things. I mean, if the treasurer sends these notices certified in by regular mail, most courts will hold that up because the regular mail didn't come back. I think the right thing to do with your approval is just to give them another 30 days and have Sean handle, Deputy Samborn, sorry, have Deputy Samborn hand deliver it tomorrow. You can't be sure that they were legally notified of this impending foreclosure.
So they refuse the first ones?
According to the post office, they refused to pick it up. But I have, you know, in 20 years of being a tax collector, there are many people that will tell you that they never got a notice from the post office.
So if they continue to dodge us, what's the remedy?
If you guys support another 30-day notice, then tomorrow morning, Deputy Samborn is going to hand them his 30 days, and that's it.
If he can find them.
Well, he will. They live in Lebanon. They're year-round residents.
Oh, okay.
He just between, by the time we got it back from the post office. So they have 30 days. We allow them 30 days to pay the 2020 taxes. If they don't, at the end, you foreclose in the past. The board has allowed what they call a 30-day right to redemption. They'll allow you 30 days to buy it back if you pay all three years, administration fee. The biggest question is, do you want to just take that lead now, or do you want to try to serve them making sure they got it? Everybody else got it and paid. This is our last one.
All the others?
To make sure they-
Everybody else is paid.
Wonderful.
See, the only problem I find with it is if they're dodging it, like it sounds like, we're actually granting them 30 days extra, and we didn't grant anybody else the 30-day extra because they actually did their deed, what they were supposed to have done.
Well, it might sound like it, but I mean, can we prove that?
Well, that's the problem. We can't prove it. So, and the mail really is terrible lately.
Well, right, I mean, with East Lebanon, I mean, you know, what if they work two 40-hour jobs? I mean, we can't say, I mean, there's a little more to it. I mean, it's a piece of land on Gauding Road. I mean, we can serve them the impending foreclosure. I mean, I think that it would, you know, hold up that we attend it.
Is this the first year this has happened with this property?
Oh, with this individual? Yeah, it's one of the first years that they've been on there.
Okay.
I think, I think probably what we got to do is serve them, give them the extra 30 days, just so they can really prove that he didn't get it, you know.
Yeah, I can't be 100% sure that one was by right of hand.
Are we setting a precedent that we would do this in the future?
No, because with our contract deputy in the future, I told the treasurer, you know, forget about the certified. You have a contract deputy that's at your, you can call, hand him all the certifies and let him go do it.
It's probably cheaper on our part.
Probably. All right.
We had no way of knowing the mail was going to take as long as it did, or we would have gotten this handled.
Okay.
All right.
30 days. All right, that's all I have.
Great, thank you. Wayne, did you come with pitches?
Oh, look, he's got a big smile on his face.
Bring that thing right here.
I've never seen him so happy.
Wayneham Fire Chief, as the board knows, and so everybody else knows, received our tank truck. It, as of 4:30 this afternoon, was officially placed in service, and I got two people out doing driver training right now in it.
Driver training, right now?
Yep. Equipment's, most equipment's on it. We got to fine tune some stuff. Obviously, over the next few weeks, we'll get it fully in service, but it is prepared and ready for us to use right now as we speak. So, thank you for the continued support. Sorry for the delay. And I'll go out here and say this right now, the industry as a whole, no matter what manufacturer, what brand of fire truck or fire emergency apparatus you buy right now, it's a two-to-four-year wait from the time of order.
Wayne, you don't have to apologize. You weren't building the truck.
I know, I know. It just took a lot of heat over the years, obviously getting it. So it's here, and we're using it, so.
Great.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Cemetery Committee?
Yeah, two individuals from the cemetery committee. I met with them today, so I've got all the paperwork. I'm just going to go over it for them. Jim McKend, do you know both of them generally?
Jim Driscoll, this is Ken Allen.
So the cemetery committee and their chairman, Steve Corello, is out on the job. I mean, he'll be here tonight, but we did speak to him today at a conference call. They have been working very hard with different cemeteries in town, getting bids to have some trees removed. So they've got four or five different projects that they'd like to do. They have $6,926 in their cemetery fund that they're allowed to spend, this breakdown from the treasurer. We're just going to go through the different projects. I did speak to David last week while you were out, and we discussed that these are all individual products, projects. So the first one, based on priority, is Samhainburg, is what they decided. We've got three bids. One from Kimball Sun for $1,500, one of the Tree Fellas for $2,200, and one from CTI for $3,600. So.
Who's the first one again? I'm sorry.
Kimball and Suns?
Okay.
They were the low?
They were the low. It is the recommendation from the cemetery committee that we go with Kimball's, assuming we can get a completed W-9 and liability insurance. They'd like the backup, okay, Tree Fellas, if by chance that falls through.
Are they supposed to clean up everything that they're doing?
Yeah, they're going to clean.
They're going to haul out everything?
Yep.
And, and so before the final payment is made, they'll have it all cleaned up?
Yeah, and it would be right down to, they said, no higher than four inches on the stump. So later on, if we want to do something like that, we can get rid of those too.
I kind of like the idea of having the backups, because tree guys are tough, because, you know, you might, they'll say, oh, I'll be there, then they don't show up. At least you have someone to fall back on. So who was the second one?
So the second one was Tree Fellas.
Tree Fellas?
First one was Kimball.
And that was for how much?
$2,200.
Okay.
What they're hoping, I mean, it's their intent to go with a low bid on all of these, but they like your flexibility based on what David said. As long as they stay within the $6,900, they can get these projects done this year.
We looked into all three companies. You probably know them better than I do, Dave. I'm not in-
They're all good.
And I've heard good things from about all three of them, you know. I haven't heard anything bad, so we just.
So the second work is going to be done at the Nathan Road Cemetery. The low bid on this one was the Tree Fellas, $1,800. Coming in close second was Kimball at $2,000, and also at $2,000 was CTI. The third one that they're looking to do right off is the Booth Pond Run Cemetery. Kimball and Sun came in at $1,500, and Tree Fellas came in at $3,000, and then CTI came in at $4,200.
So, so.
Three times.
I, by listening to the numbers, because they're jumping around and stuff, I would make a recommendation that even though Kimball was second, but he was real close, you choose one guy to do them all the projects.
Can I just add? So their companies, the cemetery committee, based on the conversation with the chair, is more interested in spreading the work out. They're all looking to come out and do-
Okay, you, that's what you want to do?
Why would you want to do that?
Availability.
And they're local companies, and they like to give a little work to each one of them. Some of them are Acton businesses, and they like to spread it out.
Is the one, the high bidder, is that the one that the town typically uses?
I bid on all of them. It's one of the town units, so he's not in the mix.
These, this is only, we're talking like, what's it, four cemeteries right now? There's over, over a dozen, so we want, you know, as the bids come in, we just want to be fair. And if we have a good feel about all of them, just.
Okay, I mean, if that's where you guys feel, I just, where I come from is, the numbers are so close in that one there, but the other one seems to be low bid every time. So you kind of like, okay, well, just give that guy the work. The other, obviously, the other one's way off, but even on a couple of other ones, they seem to be a big difference.
Yeah, we're going to have to get bids from tree guys again, and if they come out, I just, you know, to try to explain to them, you know, that you were the low bidder, you didn't get it. We don't really want to-
Yeah, I understand that, yeah.
Playing field, you know.
Do the jobs have specific marked trees that they're taking down?
Yeah, we went and-
And, and so that their, their bids, do they, is there some rationale for, given the number of trees and size, versus the, in relation to the bid, is there some logic to this, or?
Yeah, they counted the tree.
How do you know if the bid is reasonable for a given job?
Yeah, we, we took them to each one of the sites and showed them the boundaries, and, and either Kenny was there, myself, or Steve. Steve was at most of them, and he, all of them were showed the same trees that were going to be removed and taken out of there. They're all bidding under the same.
So the last one is, so those are the, those three totaled, what do we figure, $4,000, $4,800 for those three. The other one that they're going to be putting in, you'll see for their budget coming up, because they're going to be asking for more money, is a Route 109 project. The low bid on that was $4,600, so it's not something they're prepared to do this year, but.
We don't have the money to do it. Right up by, let's see, Restaurant Out there, Willie's.
Oh, okay.
Like Crowley's.
Oh, yeah, 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 I know what you're talking about. I had to think about it for a second.
They do have, so right now, you've got two of them going to Kimball, one going to Tree Fellas. Tree Fellas also quoted one tree on Gauding Road that the other ones weren't able to get out to. They're asking your leniency on one bid, but that one's $1,200. They can get it all, all those four done within the $6,900. Is your approval?
$1,200 for one tree?
Yeah.
Huge, though. Yeah, I mean.
I paid $2,000 for one tree one day.
Just going to say, I paid $2,200.
Some of those trees are so big, it takes so long.
Actually, I paid more than that. Are they bringing a crane in, or is just something they're going to?
Different ones are going to use cranes, and, but they're going to take everything.
Because that's what gets expensive, is the cranes.
Kenny and Steve, there's piles at every one of these. These, some of these cemeteries haven't been cut or trimmed in over 100 years, you know. So these guys have done a lot of the work themselves, and-
They have headstones and really helping them out, so they're at a very reasonable price as well. So I think we're looking for your approval for the, to allow us to make the decision based on low bid, W-9 insurance, stay within the $6,900, since they got the right amount of bids.
Yeah, no, I would just make a, you know, I would just, whatever the, whatever the forest committee recommends to do. Sorry, I'm sorry. What did I say?
Forest.
Forest, well, we're talking trees. So whatever you guys feel comfortable with, you know, you guys did your homework. You did your bids.
And they're going with low bidders, so that's-
You're the ones that have to deal with them, so, yeah.
I have no problem with it.
Do we need a motion?
Motion to approve?
I make a motion. We approve the bids for the cemetery committee tree cutting.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Yeah. I have a-
Please come to the podium.
Ginny O'Shea, I've had experience with one of these, and I'm not sure I'm comfortable with putting this out here tonight, but the other, other people in my neighborhood also have had a similar experience, all within a week's time. And this particular company, I would, I wouldn't do it if he offered to do it for free. He stuck a lot of people, was only doing part of the job.
There's a concern from one member on the committee as well, that I just learned before the meeting. So with your permission, and we'll talk off camera, and assuming it's the first or second one, just give us the flexibility.
Without, without referencing the firm.
I'm not.
No, I appreciate that. Thank you. Can you give us some sense of the, the nature of the issue, or would that be going too far?
Yeah, they had a, a job scheduled in the neighborhood, and so other people saw them and said, oh, when you're through there, I, I got some trees over here. So they ended up, I think, going to at least four or five places. And for me personally, I couldn't give you a lot of detail about the other jobs. But I paid to have trees cut down and removed. And they were sizable trees. They never removed them. After multiple calls and excuses, six months later, I got some friends to come and do the job.
So they, they cut them, but they didn't remove them?
Left them there.
That's why I asked the question, that I did, and I've seen a similar experience as well.
Right in, if you look at the bottom of the bids.
They're removable.
And the brush put chipped in mess.
I understood it was going to be done too.
Well, like the-
Can we withhold final payment until it's cleaned?
I wouldn't give them a nickel until the last-
Well, we won't be paying any bills until the job's finished. The job is going to be completely finished. Yeah.
Okay, so, I appreciate that issue. I've seen it myself.
Yeah, if we could just ask one other thing for the committee. As far as the budgeting, there's three different accounts. There's one that has, it's just for-
operations and maintenance, the $3,000. That's the regular one we talked about today. And then you have your rollover account.
What's the one for the flags and that? That's $3,000. And then the, the one that's a trust, you said, is $10,000?
Well, there are cemetery trusts that are, don't have anything to do with your budget. There's several cemetery-
It's maintenance, you told me, right? You said you looked into it. It was for maintenance, the $10,000 for the-
Right, so we have, we hold several cemetery trust fund accounts. We're a treasurer, so we try to guide you through this. When they were accepted, there's something, some sort of stipulation that clearly says that you can only use the money, the interest, to maintain it.
Okay, so just the interest is-
That's the interest to maintain.
So it's like an endowment?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
We pulled, we pulled a warrant article on each one of them on how they were accepted. They may be different verdicts, but the ones that we looked at that-
So that's how it's funded? That was going to be my next question, is it's just the interest off of the original?
Somebody made a donation at one point. The town accepted it. It's in its own cemetery account. There's five or six of them.
And it's specific for maintenance for?
For that cemetery.
Okay.
So, so we're going to make sure we use that money first?
And I don't think they've pulled money out of those either.
Well, that's my point. Let's use that money first before the town's money.
It's none of these cemeteries.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, these are special family cemeteries. I'll pull those through if you want.
And then, what was, what was my other question? So as far as tree cutting, moving forward.
So you have a reserve account. That's where the $6,900 is in.
Yeah, so that'll be gone by June.
Sounds like it.
Yeah.
So your new budget's-
Probably a dozen more with trees, so.
You asked for $10,000 or whatever.
And we won't be able to use the $3,000 or the $10,000 for the trees.
Right. Well, the three, yeah, the $3,000 is your flag.
Flags and markers.
Okay, $6,900, that you're using the tree cut.
Uh huh.
You're going to ask the voters to replenish the $10,000.
Okay, that's, okay, that's, all right. That's what I'm asking these guys, right? All right. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Any other department head committee updates before we move on?
Seems like I never get my name on the agenda anytime. Maybe it's because I just don't ask to be on the agenda. Good evening. Mary Grant Committee, Dan Crampet's Committee, met recently to set our schedule and to discuss a couple of other items. First and foremost, as we had a vote to transfer some of the money from our account to the cemetery committee, specifically to pay for a headstone from Mary Grant's mother. Apparently, the headstone that's in place is a temporary headstone. It really needs to be replaced. Cemetery Committee approached us to see if we would support, not pay for the whole headstone, but support some money towards it. My committee voted 4-0 to go ahead and transfer that money. I will be instructing Jennifer and our treasurer to go ahead and do that probably this coming week.
Where is that being funded from?
The Mary Grant account.
Oh, okay.
After that, we pretty much set our schedule for the year, so we'll have our spring cleanup in April on Earth Day. After that, we're planning on having our community picnic again in July. Then we're hoping to have a movie night in the park. We're going to project a movie on a, a screen on the back of the barn or something like that with a sound system. That will be August 19th. We hope to have a campfire with s'mores there. And then, of course, our annual pumpkin carving party will be October 21st. Last year, if you remember, was a huge success. We did over 100 pumpkins. We're hoping to beat that again this coming year, so. That was it for me.
Great effort.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, committee. Right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, we're now, we've been having some discussions, please go back actually to the spring, and the board has had an opportunity individually to spend some time with Mark Roy. I'm sorry, did I miss something else?
Yeah, we got to do old business first, these two, then we'll get down.
Okay, I thought we'd get to, can we, let's just, in order to give Mark an opportunity as colleague to get, to get to his presentation, let's, let's go to that next, if that's all right. I, I know we talked about this before, but I'd really like to give him that opportunity. We've had a chance to, all the board members have had a chance to talk with Mark Roy, who's a principal with Barry Talbot and Royer. This is something we've been talking with them now for a number of months, to come in and provide supplemental accounting, budgetary, and sort of other financial consulting services to the town that we think could be really beneficial. And so Mark is joined by Susan Tuttle, his associate. Welcome to both of you. And they're going to have a brief presentation describing their services, and there'll be an opportunity for questions from the board, and when that's done, we'll open it up to the public. Mark, Susan?
Thank you, yes. Again, my name is Mark Roy. This is Susan Tuttle. Our firm is Barry Talbot Royer out of Falmouth. You have the proposal for services that we did up for the select board. Just to give you an idea of, you know, really an idea, kind of an overarching idea of what the services are, is that we provide two primary, two core services, AP processing and payroll processing for government. So schools, which Susan manages most of those accounts, and towns, and a couple of counties around the state. The reason why we got into it was because our firm is also an auditing firm, right? So we have a ton of governmental clients, and we've found that in small and medium-sized towns, that the, the ability of those towns and schools to have competent bookkeeping and competent financial management is really hard, right? Because either they're far-flung, and they have very few, you know, residents, or very few, you know, residents that have that type of training, or they just, just don't know that they, you know, don't know what they need, right? So we had, had been auditing one client, this was about five, six years ago. It was a, a small school. And as is normal, you know, we're, you know, they don't know what their financial position is at any point in time. In order to perform the audit, we're doing, you know, dozens of adjustments, or proposing dozens of adjustments. And really, as an auditor, you're not supposed to do that, because you're now no longer independent, because you're essentially auditing your own work, right? If, if the, if the client can't demonstrate that they can maintain their own books and have some sort of understanding of accounting, that you're essentially doing their accounting, and now you've, you've impaired your independence. So I'd talked to the superintendent of the schools, and I said, look, I can't keep doing your work. And he said, no, no, I get it. It's just, I don't have, I don't, I don't know what I can do. I mean, we're up in Stratton, we're up in Stratton, Maine. I don't have anybody locally that I can hire. Right now, at the time, he said, even now, I'm outsourcing it to another school department down, down in, in Rumford to be able to do my books, and even they're not able to do the books correctly. And so I thought about it, and I called him back. I said, well, if you're already doing it remotely, I don't know why we wouldn't be able to do it remotely for you. I mean, we know how to do all the governmental accounting. We're experts in governmental accounting, and we can leverage whatever technology you're using. It's just we would find some other audit firm to audit our work. And so that's how we started out doing this line of business. And really, we're the only CPA firm in the state that does this business so far. And once we, once we got that one account, we, we have slowly grown, grown the business so that now we're managing the back offices of-
Nine schools, four towns, and two counties.
Nine schools, four towns, and two counties. With a staff of six, right? So because of our expertise and because, because of our efficiencies of-
Processes.
Right, processes, we're able to do it well and do it at what we would, what we would consider a reasonable price. So the offer to the, to the town is, you have a couple of choices, right? We provide full, full services, which is, again, is the payroll and the AP processing. And then on top of that, the higher-level stuff, helping with budgeting, helping with capital improvements plans, helping with, if, if you need to finance something, helping to analyze those, those financing options. Relationships with bankers, because we have relationships with other bank, banks around the state because of our other clients. So, and then just general expertise and general experience that we see in one town might apply here, and then we bring that up to you guys, and vice versa. So in addition to those core level services, there's a bunch of additional benefits that the town can, can reap. One of the other things is that, you know, you'll know, I mean, primarily what the select board is concerned with, especially during budget season, is kind of knowing where their, where their position is, their financial position is at any point in time. Instead of what is common among small and medium-sized governments, is they're essentially waiting for the auditor to close the books, figure out what your financial position is, and then say, okay, here you are. As of June 30th of last year, I mean, you said- the auditor's coming in next week to finish up the audit work, well, Ron's not gonna know what the financial position of the town is for another weeks, another few weeks after that. So, after a while, you know, you're like, "Well, back in June thirtieth, we were at X number of dollars for unassigned fund balance, it's now, you know, February, March, and we're in the middle of our budget season, we're almost at our town meeting, and we still don't know that information." So that's common. One of the benefits is that you don't have that problem with us after we've incorporated the town fully. You could pretty much ask us at any point in time, and the answers that you're getting, you know, are, are reliable, because we've been maintaining them on an expert basis all along, as opposed to, "Well, I don't know, I didn't, I didn't know I was supposed to adjust that account." Well, you're supposed to, because there are all the accounts you have to adjust. So we've given you a couple options, the, the overall option is, you can have the full services. Right now, the town is, does weekly payrolls, and so we gave you two pricing options, because obviously, this is, the costs are really just driven by labor, right? So if you have a weekly payroll, it'll cost more. If you, if you change to a bi-weekly payroll, it's less work, so the price is a little bit less. And then the other option is to carve out the payroll portion, have the town still responsible for the payroll tasks, and then the HR-related tasks, and those are bulleted in the process, and then everything else would, would be included, and so that's a lower price, obviously. And so really, I can answer any questions, if you have any?
In terms of reporting that would come out during the year?
Yep.
What could we expect?
Well, for, it depends on what you really want. So all of our clients request different types of reporting, so there's, you know, one town wants budget actuals every single month, and then they also wanna know what, what the status is of their reserve accounts, meaning the activity of the reserve account every single month, which we provide that to them. Other, another town, they don't, they just want quarterly reports, some of our schools want quarterly reports, some don't want any reports, so it's really just driven by what you guys want.
Would you give us warnings if it looks like an account may be trending towards overspending?
Yeah, I mean, normally, for the budget actuals, pretty much all of our clients ask for monthly budget actuals, except for the one that wants it quarterly. And then as you get closer and closer to year-end, we obviously try to remind the town administrator or the select board, "Hey, you should be keeping an eye out on these, on these accounts." Normally, what we do is, we'll send the budget actual reports to the town manager or the administrator, and then they'll distribute them to the department heads, who are responsible for those budgets, and say, "Hey, take a look at this, see where you're at, and any sort of discretionary spending that you can control, make sure that you're keeping an eye on that." There's some things where you can't control it, like salaries and benefits, and, but overtime, right? Well, we don't really have as much money as we thought we would have, and we're getting close to the end of the year, so you can't, you can't do this overtime, or you, we're not gonna buy those supplies, that type of thing.
So, the, the services would include accounts payable, and if we choose to payroll, but...
Right.
We may not.
Right.
That's something we'd have to, you know, have further discussion about. It would include preparation of a set of financial statements at year-end?
Yep.
With the general ledger fully adjusted?
Oh, yeah.
At that time, so, and that would be done by when?
So, the first year that we come on, if, if this proposal is accepted, we wouldn't start till July one, so FY twenty-three's books wouldn't be closed, wouldn't have been maintained by us. So, what I generally tell clients is, "Look, the first priority is to actually do the onboarding process, we can, which can take a couple months to really fully integrate, depending on how complicated the town's processes are." Then the second priority after that is to clean up the prior year's books, close those books, have, prepare those financial statements, and then give them to the auditor.
So if you were engaged for the, the year ending June thirty, twenty-three?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-three.
Yeah.
You would actually prepare a set of financial statements for that year?
Mm-hmm.
Even though you didn't do the work, the original entry work?
Yes, yeah, yeah, we would definitely do that.
And that would come to us, I'm sorry, if you...
I put in the proposal, you could probably expect that around the end of December, for us to have that, to be able to give it to the auditor to audit. Otherwise, nor, under normal years, after we've been managing the books for a full year, and we usually can do a quick turnaround time, so we usually have them done by the end of September, that we can give them to the auditor.
Would you have a, a preliminary draft set of financials, so that we would know where we ended the year?
Oh, yeah.
Before that?
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Sometime in August, September, perhaps?
Oh, yeah, definitely, I mean, even in July.
So we'd know how the year ended before October?
Correct.
In other words, and it would then be upon the town to engage an auditor, to come in, an outside auditor, to come in and look at the work that you had done?
Correct.
And so, this is gonna be a much simpler audit than what they're currently doing?
Well, yes. So, an audit is really, an audit should not be the auditor going in and doing anything with your books.
Which is what they're doing now.
Right.
That they're preparing the accounting records and issuing the statements.
Right, the auditor should simply say, like, I mean, if you're at a big corporation, right? Pepsi-Cola has their own accountants, professional accountants, they're the ones that prepare the financial statements, all the auditor is saying is, "Let me take a look at your financial statements and the evidence that you have to support those financial statements, and I'll just render opinion on whether or not..."
That's what they typically do.
Right, whether or not they're fairly stated. But what happens with small entities, small governments, is, "Give me your trial, unadjusted trial balance."
Yeah.
And then I go, and then me as an auditor, I say, "Well, are these correct?" And the general response is, "Oh, I guess so." So then, at that point, the auditor is, "Well, let me get some evidence, and let me propose all of these adjustments for all of these accounts, because the evidence that I get does not match what you have in your unadjusted trial balance." What we provide to you is an adjusted trial balance, meaning we've already gone through those accounts, and we're going through those accounts during the year anyway, which is what should be happening, but doesn't happen, right? We're going through those accounts, reconciling those accounts, making sure they're up to date. And so really, at the end of, of June, you already have, we already have a, a pretty good idea of, of where you're at, with the exception of some minor accrual, you know, gap accrual adjustments that have to be made at year-end, right? Accruing for wages, accruing for compensated absences, accruing for receivables that we're not gonna know are gonna be coming in, because we don't have any other notice of it coming in until July or August, right? So there's some minor things, but at the end of, at the end of July, you know, the beginning of July, we're able to say, "Okay, well, your, your fund balance is generally about here." And then during budget season, what we, what we generally do is provide projections for the town on, okay, well, your fund balance was at June thirtieth last year, you know, let's say a million dollars, your unassigned fund balance. And you're trending right now to be on, you know, on track, to have X amount of fund balance at the end of the year. That helps you as select board members and budget committee members to determine, "Okay, well, how much of our fund balance can we use to offset the amount that we need to raise?" As it is now, often, select boards are just going in blind, they're basically going in based off of what last year's unassigned fund balance is. Well, it may or may not be, that's not what your fund balance will be at the end of this coming year, which you're budgeting for the next year, right? You know, you're budgeting for FY twenty-four, you don't know what your FY twenty-three fund balance is gonna be, or what's available at FY, at the end of FY twenty-three, you only know what's available at the end of FY twenty, or what was available at the end of FY twenty-two.
How might you, would you be able to help us with an issue, it's a good issue? We've got significant unassigned fund balance. My view, we generate a significant surplus. And to me, it's, it, you know, both those should be, you know, over some period of time, given some plan, should be taken down.
Yep.
And would you be able to provide some, some guidance in terms of, what do other towns typically carry as a surplus?
Yeah.
And how should we think about that?
Sure.
In terms of an operating surplus and unassigned fund balance? What is a healthy, appropriate amount to, to establish? And then, with your services and the development of the budget, help us get to that point?
Yes. Yeah, and we do that with all of our clients as is, right? I mean, we help them, 'cause different towns have different, different preferences, right? There are some towns where they don't wanna have any reserves, and they wanna have as tight of a unassigned fund balance as possible, there's other towns that we work with where they want to sock away as much in reserves as possible, to be able to prepare for upcoming events, so they have to, they don't have to borrow as much. It all depends on whatever the, whatever the, you know, the town wants, right? The town's people, what they're comfortable with. But we can always provide, and we do for our existing clients, we always provide advice on options, right? Whether or not an option is good or bad, well, that's really, depends on what your objectives are, right? I mean, so, option A could be good if your objective is to lower your unassigned fund balance.
Are there any limits on the amount of those services you'll provide to us if you have this engagement?
No. So, the, the way these are designed, because the town's budget annually, is we, we estimate a fee based off of how much I think work is gonna, how much it's gonna take us for work, because I'm trying to, I'm trying to realize an effective hourly rate with all my clients, right? And so, when I, when we enter in with a, a new client, I'm basically estimating, "All right, well, given the size of the town, the complexity of the town, the volume of transactions, if we're doing payroll, if we're not doing payroll, about how many hours are we gonna be putting into this?" And that's how I, how I come up with the fee. Once I set the fee for the year, well, that's it.
It's a fixed fee.
It's fixed fee. So, anything that you expect that you would get from a business manager in-house, the idea is that you get it from us as well. So if you need any research done that's related to what a business manager would do, not just general research.
We're on call twenty-four seven.
Yeah. And that's the other benefit, I mean, you're not really just hiring me, and you're not just hiring me and Susan, you're hiring my, my entire staff. So really, the fee is, you know, three CPAs, three staff accountants, which is what our current staffing level is, who never need any training in-house, meaning you guys don't have to worry about there being any training, any turnover, because if there is turnover on my end, well, that should be transparent to you, you're not gonna notice it. I mean, unless I go.
I understand, and you and Jennifer have spent some time talking about, and, and with the treasurer, the, you know, who will be responsible for what?
Correct.
What your services would be, what would be retained in-house by our treasurer?
Right.
And so we've gotten to a, a, sort of a revised set of duties for the treasurer that look pretty good to us, we've had a chance to share that with the treasurer, she's fully supportive of this, as I, you know, so, you know, there are no issues. I would imagine many times, you know, when you're coming into a town?
Yeah.
You know, trying to figure out that, you know, who does what can be a bit of an issue. I just wanna make clear that we think we've got that, that base covered here.
Yeah.
And so, that's good.
And I wanna be clear that, and it's clear in our, our proposal, that our services don't replace the treasurer, meaning we're not, you're still statutorily required to have a treasurer, the town is still, is, you as select board members and the town management, the treasurer and the administrator, still must meet all of their statutory and, you know, regulatory and grant requirements, anything that, you guys are still responsible for that. Our job is really just to help you achieve that goal, right?
Okay.
Yeah, so we, we carve out, you know, who's doing what, and we do that with all of our clients. So some, some of our clients, you know, the treasurer's really just the town manager, and he doesn't really, he or she doesn't have time to do, you know, look at every single thing, and so they say, "Okay, well, here, you guys do all of these processes." As others, you know, one of the counties that we deal with, the treasurer doesn't really want us to do anything with the banking, other than, you know, download the bank's statements and, and be able to do research, she doesn't want us doing any transfers or wires or anything like that, just because that's her preference as treasurer, and so she doesn't allow us, but others do, right? Others say, "Yes, we'll give you that authority, we'll set you up with the bank to be able to do that." And it's really just a question of what the town is, wants, wants us to do.
I, I think it's, it's obvious, but one, an issue that I think small towns have, is the issue of segregation of duties. Typically have one, maybe two people, that are basically, you know, touching everything.
Right.
And thank God, we've got very reliable, honest people that have always worked here in Acton, but as an employer, as a business, you always wanna make sure that you've set up good internal controls, so that there's, there's an ability to prevent any kind of issue. And what your services would provide is an enhanced level of segregation of duties and internal controls, as I see it. Is that a fair statement?
Yeah, that's fair.
Yeah, 'cause now you've got an outside firm, insured firm, correct?
Yep.
And, you know, basically making sure that all the checks and balances are in place, and everything is copacetic.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, as with any control, they're not a hundred percent proof, but...
It's, it would be enhanced over what we're doing today.
Right, the, the entire point of controls is to mitigate, you know, errors and fraud, and, you know, adding an extra level, an extra set of eyes, not just my staff who are entering stuff, but me when I'm reviewing stuff, when I'm reconciling stuff, and then when we're passing it between the town's management and, and my staff, there's always conversations, there's always, "Hey, you know, are we all on the same page with this?" And then the reporting that you get from us on a monthly basis, or however you want it, that also is an additional set of eyes on things to see if, yeah, does everything seem to make sense here? I mean, we budgeted X amount, we're spending X amount, does that seem to make sense? The warrant process, you, you know, the warrant is all through electronics, so DocuSign, we'll send it via DocuSign to your, to your emails, you can review all of the invoices, or, we do it one of two ways, you either just get the, the warrant that just lists it, and then if you wanna look at an invoice, we can send that to you, 'cause everything's electronic. Or we can send you all of the invoices along with the warrant, we do it both ways, depends on the client. Then you can just sign it, and then however you guys set it up here, the town, as far as presenting the warrant at a select board meeting, basically, we wait until after we get a, a majority of, of signatures before we print and send off the check. So I mean, it, it's an electronic version of what you do, basically.
Okay. Any other questions?
I think it's covered it all.
Yeah. Jennifer?
Thank you.
Any public comment, a question?
Thank you for the proposal.
Yep.
What I don't see on here is any background on the company. We didn't get any history, you know, how are we supposed to vet who you are, how long you've been in business?
Sure.
You know, that type of information.
Sure.
So if you could discuss that?
Sure.
Appreciate it.
So Barry Talbot Royer is a firm that's been in business in some form for over a hundred years. We are a full accounting CPA firm, so we do tax preparation, tax planning, we do bookkeeping, and we do audit and other test services. And our audit department, which is, I have the audit department, we have, we focus on governmental auditing, so we've been doing governmental auditing as a firm for forty, fifty years now. And we have a number of auditors in-house, there are CPAs, so there's what, how many CPAs?
The audit team?
Yeah, there's four, there's four or five of us on the audit team. And then, the municipal government team, there's three CPAs, me, Susan, and another CPA. We're fully insured, and we're, we're members of the AI CPA, the American Institutes of Certified Public Accountants, which requires us to get CPE requirements every year, I mean, continuing professional education to maintain our certifications, I don't know...
I think if we decided to move forward, we would obviously be checking references, you've got a number, and so, that would be another means of, of just, you know, getting comfortable with the firm.
Yeah. I mean, me personally, I've been, I've been an accountant for thirteen years, I've been doing government audits for twelve, twelve years now, I've been a CPA for eleven years, and I've been doing these municipal back office, municipal government management services for five years, so that was when we had our first client. So, you know, I'm, I'm well-versed in governmental accounting. Governmental accounting is, is, has an additional level of complexity above your normal business accounting, right? So you have FASB standards, Financial Accounting Standards Board standards, which apply to businesses, for-profit businesses and not-for-profit organizations, and then you have the Government Accounting Standards Board's GASB, which takes FASB's baseline standards, accounting standards, and adds a level of complexity, primarily fund accounting, so that, that fund accounting, so that, that the town, or the school, or the government can be accountable, held accountable, and provide more detailed information to taxpayers. That's really the overarching theme of GASB's additional standards, accountability.
Any other questions, comments?
Actually, I do, Tom.
Go right ahead, sir.
This is directed to the chair, to the board, basically. Did we not just get a contract with an auditor, auditing firm?
For.
For auditing our books?
The year ending June 30, '22, we engaged RH Smith to conduct the audit, and that was what Jennifer was referring to, that hopefully, we're gonna have, you know, received sometime in February.
Yeah, but that's just a one-year, or just?
It was a one-year engagement. I think.
These guys aren't doing an audit for us. We're still gonna have to have a separate auditor to do what we're doing here.
Right, right, right. I understand that.
I think, as you recall, when we did the RFP last year, I think this approach may offer a wider array of firms that might be interested in doing an audit, because some firms would've had an issue in actually preparing the general entries and the general ledger and doing the financial statements. So, I, I think this structure will perhaps allow other firms to, you know, be more interested in doing the audit for the town than, than previously.
Less work for them.
Well, less work, and they, there are professional standards the auditors have to meet, and one of them is, you can't prepare the books and do the audit, right? You shouldn't anyways. And so.
You can't.
Is that right?
Yeah, you're not allowed to.
Not allowed to do that, so.
I mean, they couch it in very specific terms.
So, I, I think by getting a firm or a resource that can prepare the statements that are ready for an auditor to come in, my, my guess is, if we, if we were to look for a different audit firm in the future, some point out in the future, we may find we have more options than we did the last time.
Can you remind me what the price of this auditing firm that we acquired? What we're paying them?
12? I think it's, there's, there's an, there's an amount.
Yeah.
There's an amount for the school, and an amount for the town, and I, I thought it was 12,000 for the town, but I may be mistaken. Don't hold me to that, right?
Uh-huh. And I'm, I'm.
I told him I'd send him an email tomorrow, let him know exactly what it is.
And I see in your proposal here that you have a, are you looking for a one-year or to do business with the town of Acton on a continual basis? Because I, you have a 3% fee for subsequent years, depending on which plan that the town goes for.
Yeah. I mean, generally, these, the idea behind these services is that it's a continuing engagement. We have an engagement contract every year, right? Every single year, just like you would with, you know, a lawyer or with an audit firm. But the idea is that this is an ongoing engagement, meaning, once we, once we work together with the town, the idea is that we stay working together with the town, because otherwise, you're not gonna reap the full benefits of having a professional firm. So, for example, I do wanna be clear that what we're, what we're doing is not auditing. This is not audit work, right? Audit work is completely different. This is business, financial business management, right? Managing the books, which is bookkeeping, and then, doing the reporting and making sure that all of your, all of your reporting meets GASB standards. That's accounting, right? Auditing is saying, did you meet that standard, right?
Let me try to clarify what I think he was getting at.
Yeah.
This is a, a one-year engagement.
That's correct.
But realistically, this is not something, once you start it, you're gonna turn off.
Right.
So, as with any outsourcing of a function, and that's really what we're talking about here, as with any outsourcing of a function, once you do that, it's highly, highly likely that you're gonna continue to do that. So, it will be an annual commitment to, to whatever firm is chosen, chosen, but, to be honest with you, I suspect that firm, in this case, there's only one firm in the state of Maine doing it, if we were to go this route, it would be a long-term relationship, until we decided to change it.
And, right now, as, as you said, there are no other CPA firms doing it. I would think out of the CPA firms that have the ability to do it, meaning they have the government accounting expertise, so that's all of your, basically, government accounting, auditing firms. RHR Smith is probably the, the one that has the, the capability to be able to do it as well, right? But I don't see any indications that, that RHR Smith is interested in starting up this line of business. He might, seeing as we're getting to a point where we're, we're getting to capacity as well, and there is a great need among small and medium-sized. I mean, I get calls, pretty much, not every day, but get several calls a month, asking, hey, do you have, you know, we heard that you do these services, we're in dire need of services because our treasurer left, and we need, or our finance director left, and we don't know what we, you know, we don't know what to do, we can't find anybody, because we can't, you know, the labor market is what it is. Or, when we did hire somebody, they didn't do a very good job, and now they left, and now we have these messy books, and our auditor is telling us we need somebody. I mean, it's a huge problem throughout the state. Well, what I think is a huge problem throughout the state, which is why we started doing it as a business. I would imagine there's gonna be other entrants into the market.
I would think so.
Eventually. But right now, I haven't seen any indications from anybody else. But you're gonna, you're still gonna be limited in the number of firms that'll be able to do it. They have to have the, the government accounting expertise in order to provide the services. It can't just be regular.
Any other comments, questions? Looks like Ray is still sta, oh.
Just as a taxpayer, looking at the different proposals here, that's why I asked the question of what the auditing firm was asking, and depending on which plan, it can vary. So, we're asking the taxpayers to foot almost a night, over $92,000 for this type of situation, plus whatever the cost is for the school.
That's with the auditor and this.
Correct, with both.
Yeah.
With both of that.
I assume that's the full services, as, as opposed to maybe not doing payroll.
Correct. Without the payroll, it's like 77,000.
You know, you know, Ray, I'll respond to this, even though it doesn't require one. I think there can be tremendous benefit to the town from having these services and professional advice. I think there's a potential to have a, a set of budgets and performance to budget that is closer than what we have today. And that, you know, I haven't seen this year's numbers yet, which is really, you know, last year's numbers. My guess is, is probably a half-million-dollar surplus the town generated last year. And if we can get that down to a significant number, this, for me, is a very worthwhile investment, given the potential to actually save money in the budget, so that we can, we don't need to raise as much by taxes. So, you know, you get what you pay for, and so, sometimes it's, it's worth spending the money. That's my own personal opinion.
This is gonna be something, we're gonna, I, I believe we're probably gonna end up having to put on the town floor anyways.
Yeah.
We're gonna be putting it on the town floor, there'll be discussion over it, and you'll be able to see the real numbers at that point. We'll know what direction we're gonna go in.
Yeah.
We still have to discuss everything anyways, before we even put out a one article, so.
Yeah, right.
So, but at the end of the day, it, it'll be something there that we may put it on its own war article that way there, because this is something that, like, like he said, when you start it, this is something we're gonna continue on with. That's the purpose here. So, it's not, not, this, this isn't gonna be a one-time deal, so, this is something we're gonna all put on the town floor, and make sure that the town wants to go this route, and, because it will be a long-going, ongoing thing.
No, I'm in agreement with Tom, that it will be a beneficial thing, especially if all the reports come across when requested, as far as the warrant and finance and all that, and on that timely basis, if those reports can be gotten. I would think that that's an advantage also.
Yeah, the warrant finance will love this.
Deliver it to the warrant finance on a timely, timely, quick. Careful. Sorry, go ahead, please.
I guess my first question was about who's making the decision? Is it gonna be the townspeople, or is it gonna be you three?
Townspeople.
Okay.
I don't think we've decided that.
Yeah.
I can understand that, but I, I don't think we've, I think it can be done in a couple of different ways. I agree, I happen to agree with David.
You gotta make a decision, yeah.
And I don't know what Kim's view is on it, that, given that it's a fundamental change in how the town manages its financial affairs, I think it should, the town deserves a part presentation on it.
Right.
Kinda like that guy that's looking over shoulder all the time, and I'm thinking, okay, if we throw in 70-some thousand dollars into our general government, and, you know, as much as I love you guys on the finance committee, that'll be the first thing that pops up, where does 70-some thousand dollars come, blah, 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 blah? Either way, the town's gonna make the decision, because someone can make an amendment on the floor and pull that 70-some thousand out. So, the way I feel is, we put it on the town floor as a separate article, before we get to our general government, that way there, we know what direction we're going in.
Okay. Just, I guess, one question for you. You talked about archiving records.
Yes.
For us for seven years. Does Maine or the federal government require us to archive records longer than seven years?
There are. The Maine archivist has a.
And, so, are you gonna get? Would you then get, like, a thumb drive with all the information, so that we can have, we can meet the federal and state requirements as well? I mean, we have to.
Yeah, I'm sure we'd get.
So, the Maine, Maine State Archivist has a schedule for all types of documents that need to be maintained.
Yeah.
And there, how long they need to be maintained.
Well, I'm sure, they probably know.
Yeah.
I didn't know if it's, I don't know if it's more than seven years, and if so, how are we gonna bridge that gap?
For, for any of the documents that we maintain, it's no, none of them are required to be maintained.
I'm gonna use the ladies' room.
So, the only things that would need to be maintained for longer are payroll records for, like, I9s and W4s and W2s and all that, which you would have in hard copy form anyway here. Anything that we have electronic, you're already gonna have in hard copy form here. So, we're just having electronic versions of what the town has here. The invoices and stuff like that, that doesn't need to be even maintained for seven years.
So, whatever we archive now, you will have to, you continue to be doing that?
I, I, I think there's an opportunity, given, they're gonna be imaging everything. So, that means all of our original source documents, or invoices, et cetera, will all be imaged and available to the town. And we can store, save those as long as we want to. So, as opposed to keeping file cabinets with paper, so, which is expensive and cumbersome, and things go missing, and all the problems we have with paper. So, I, I think there's a, a couple of wins in here as well, with regard to that.
And we won't have to expand the town hall.
No, no, I mean.
Yeah, don't be surprised if your treasurer still prints them off and we move them downstairs.
Oh, I, yeah, I do that myself.
Yeah, I have no issue with them.
We won't have to keep them, is the point. We'll have image documents.
Ultimately, if, if the town wants any of the electronic images, or electronic files that we have, we give them back to the town. So, if the town says, hey, give us everything that you have for 2020, I mean, it's easy enough for us to just put it on a thumb drive.
Okay.
And that's literally thousands, not, tens of thousands of documents.
Some of the towns and counties you deal with now, on average, how often are they calling you in the course of a week or a month, but with questions or needs?
It's pretty constant.
Every single day.
So, would Acton have one contact, primary contact point?
Mm-hmm. They would have, they would have either me, so generally, we assign two primary contacts for each, each client, one of the CPAs and one of the staff members, so that if I'm not available, then the staff member is there. And then, on top of that, we have a weekly meeting as a staff to go over everything that is affecting all of our clients, so that if, on the off-chance that you can't reach one of the two that are your primary contacts, you can still reach out to any of the staff members.
Okay.
And they will be able to assist you, because we all have a general idea of what's going on with all of the clients.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
I guess, a couple of my other questions, and more for, for you all. There's been, tonight, and then, there's been other town meetings, you know, weekly meetings, where the, there's been mention of whether or not we have enough internal controls amongst the employees here in Acton, meaning here in the townhouse. So, I guess my, then my question is, have the, is it RH Smith, is that our auditors? Have they ever documented a concern about our lack of internal controls?
Not that I'm aware of, no. Jennifer?
No. We, although we are a small staff, like other surrounding towns, and you wanna take the time to, to go through, you know, what a cash out looks like, who handles it, who counts it down, who goes to the bank?
Okay.
Who receives it, who matches up the receipt, and even, there are at least four people involved in, in one bill of cash out, so.
All right.
There, I mean, I appreciate, you know, it'll add to it, but there are, first of all, towns are very strong.
I don't believe there's ever been any complaints.
I think Acton has done a good job.
Yeah.
The best they can with this number of staff that we have. We do not have a lot of staff in Acton.
Well, I bring up the, this comment, because.
I feel like it's less internal.
I've heard this raised, and I think, well, by people here on the board.
I don't feel there's any internal issue. I, for me.
I think what, what's happening here is, that, we, we don't find there's any internal control issues, okay? But, on the outside.
Our treasurer left, too.
It's squawking, that, there's some, you know, there's always questions, what about internal controls, blah, 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 blah. It's always a little group of people that's done that. It's gotten back to the select board, and as far as I look at it, there's never been any issues. Only thing we're doing here is, we're just looking at an alternative way to, of doing our accounting, and I don't believe our internal controls is an issue right now.
No. I, I think the main reason for this, too, is, you know, we do have turnover. I mean, I know that the last person that was here was here for a long time, but, you know, we don't know what the future's gonna hold, and I mean, at least, if we have a company like this, you know, and somebody leaves, things are still getting done there, you know.
It, it's, it's awful tough, what she's trying to say is, we, we had someone leave.
You know.
We've got a replacement, the placement's doing her job.
Yeah.
We're not trying to replace our replacement.
No.
Um, it's, it's awful hard to do this without making someone look like they're not doing their job right.
Everybody's doing their jobs, right?
Everybody's doing their job.
We just, you know, wanna make sure that, you know, we, we have backup, I guess.
I am not inferring this at all.
Well, that's good.
This is not what I'm inferring. I'm inferring nothing.
No, no.
Other than, I have heard this comment, these, this phrase used from this board of selectmen over the course of time, which makes me think.
I have never.
What's, what's on the menu here? What's the point?
That would've come from me, because I don't think the other two had raised that issue prior to my doing.
It is you.
Huh?
It is you.
Yeah, I, I realize. And so, you know, my background is such that internal controls were something that I focused on all the time.
It was mine, too. I lived with it.
Okay, well, good.
Which is why I pick up on it.
So, I've had a chance to look at the segregation of duties.
Yeah.
That has been put in place. I think they've done a tremendous job.
Well, good.
In, in creating as much control as can be done with a relatively small amount of staff. And Jennifer's right, there, there, on most points of potential issues, there are multiple people involved. So, I, I think the internal controls are fine. When you talk about internal, I'm gonna go off a little bit here. Internal controls can be, people can misconstrue what that means. I have no concern about the integrity or the actions of anybody that works in this building. I think we're very fortunate with the people we have today, and the people that we've had in the past. we've had in the past. And I think they're all of very high ethical standard and have done the town very well. It's purely something that people that are in the finance profession will always take a look at to make sure that we've got the right internal controls. I, quite frankly, would've set up internal controls, and three years later, I'd go back and say, gee, I don't think that's quite right. Let's change it here. And you're always looking at internal controls. So, I think with a small number of staff, it's something that requires constant attention. And from my perspective, adding another resource like this will, I think, enhance it even further.
Okay. I guess, well, bottom line, what I want to know is, have you determined, I mean, of four of you, what the efficiencies are to be gained by putting out over eighty thousand dollars a year for the product? And I think you may not have an answer tonight, but I sure hope there's a public answer before a decision is made.
Well, I mean, obviously, Virginia, you know, that's why we're gonna put it on the town floor. That's why we have them coming up here tonight to, you know, give us the sales pitch to everybody. You know, I've got my reservations, and, you know, why, the reason is why. I'm still, I'm still mulling, mulling over this whole thing, you know, see whether or not this is a good idea or not. But, that's why we have them up here tonight. So, still trying to figure it out.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comment? Well, Mark, oh, Joyce?
I have a little question for that. I'm sorry.
Is it directed to them or us?
Sorry?
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry.
No, quickly going over this, I guess, as to both of you. To me, I'm reading that this can be modified or expanded to fit the town needs. There can be more, they can offer more services, where you might find we need less services.
I'm not sure about the latter.
Well, I'm not either, but I'm just saying that they, it's full service. So, what we need is what will have to be determined, pretty simply.
And we're working on that right now.
Right, exactly, exactly. What we need has to be, will be determined, the best fit for us, the best use of the money will be for us. That's what I see. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Mark, Susan, thank you very much for coming.
Appreciate it much.
Appreciate you coming and spending time with us, and I'm sure we'll be in touch with you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, let's get back to the agenda. I skipped over...
So, we're going back to old business.
Budget, old business, budget management policy?
Yep.
This is a document that's been put on the website. Hopefully, you've all had a chance to look at it. And I know the select board has done so. I wasn't here last week, was it discussed? No, last week was off, the week before?
Yeah, the week before.
They, they were still reviewing it, and then...
They were still reviewing it?
Yeah.
Okay. Any comments about this?
Well, I think it's, we made a couple changes to it, didn't we?
Yep.
We don't want to change the, is that the overtime needed to be approved in writing for the select board member, but we really just...
The liaison.
The liaison in place to...
Yeah, you know, and to have it in email.
Oh, and we added the...
Yeah.
Evaluations in May.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
The policy requires them in, what, December?
Yes.
And so, we thought it would be more appropriate to have evaluations done closer to the end of the year. So, we're gonna change the personnel policy to be in alignment with this document. I think this, my perspective serves to clarify who's responsible for, for what aspects of budget management in the town. The role of the department head, the role of the selectman, the role of the treasurer. And I, and so, it attempts to just clarify that. And I think it also makes clear that the department heads have a role in making sure that they manage within their budgets. But ultimately, it's the selectmen who are responsible for the management of town, town resources. And so, it just serves to clarify that, and I think it's a useful thing to have. Any other comment?
Fine with it.
Shall I have a motion to, to accept?
It's just a letter, okay.
Anyone care to make a motion to approve this?
I make a motion that we approve the Town of Acton budget management policy.
I'll second that.
Any public comment? All in favor? Thank you. Engineering Services RFP.
So, two weeks ago, we opened, put a one debit up, I did take a hard scan and sent it to you for review, but just not sure where you wanna go with it.
That's the second one we got. David, do you wanna comment on this? Oh, okay. Oh, I was thinking it was the...
Yeah.
We're gonna meet with them? Are we gonna meet with them? Should we? I mean, we've met with...
Absolutely. I would think we'd...
Yeah, like, to meet with them. I mean, this is a really, really good company. I mean, I've dealt with a lot of their plans on there. I mean, they're thorough. This isn't no backyard engineering company, you know. They do a really good job. They do a lot of stuff in this area.
Well, they got a lot of, they got an extensive client list, so.
So, I mean, it'd be nice to bring them in, just to, I guess, meet them, and get any questions there from the public. But, I, this is a company there that I think we could, we could work with well.
So, set up a... Okay.
I'll get something scheduled up, come on. I'll call you.
Okay, all right. Very good, thank you. Citizens' email, concerns regarding building fees?
Skip B.
Oh, I'm sorry, warrant finance questions. Excuse me.
So, the board, so hi, definitely see the questions below for the warrant finance. Please let us know if it's possible to have answers before the next meeting or not. Which is when?
I think it's Tuesday.
Monday.
Monday, okay.
All right. Okay, question number one, tax abatements. What is the driving large discrepancy between the forecasted and budgeted number of abatements? What is the dollar amount? How many abatements do we have? So, is this a fiscal year ending question, or to date in 23?
Today.
Today, 2023. So, we can explain that one, it's very easy. I mean, unfortunately, when you look at the abatement line, you've gotta compare the supplement line to offset it. So, if they inadvertently bill David, and they abate that, you're seeing that abatement, that washout, but you're gonna look at the supplement, if Tom was really the owner, so we supplement him. So, there'll be very few actual errors. I mean, there are errors 'cause they billed the wrong person, but there's gonna be very little difference between the two lines. So, we can put something together for you, use the old numbers. Please provide the account number and sub-account number for the expense revenue account. They left an updated report, so we can send that up to the treasurer to work on.
Mm-hmm.
Total budget year-to-date percentages, total budget percentage to date does not appear accurate on pages four, five, and seven. So, that's been given to the treasurer to work on as well. Fitness center, there seem to be two separate lines for electricity with different amounts. Which line is accurate? Treasurer was reviewing that. This is W2 time and 1099 time, so it's just not top priority. District two, please provide details of the equipment rentals, as this was not a budgeted expense, but it incurred over twenty-two thousand dollars of cost. I know that she did meet with Adam, has had several conversations, so we're gonna answer for that. Please clarify which account holds the salary stipend for the dam keeper. That's an easy fix, so we can do that answer. Hourly budget rate stipends, when we received the updated stipends, we did not see the following roles.
What was that question? Can I repeat that one, please?
The dam?
The one, no, the one you were reading.
Hourly budget rate stipend amounts. When we received the updated list of positions, we did not see the following. Please provide amounts. So, the town handyman, scheduled hours and rate. So, do you mind if I say, we're not putting transfer savings, transfer station superintendent slash handyman. We all know that's a combined position, so that will be easily answered. Deputy town, tax, the deputy tax collector, please clarify if there's a stipend. We have one deputy tax collector, and I believe the hourly rate that you guys got says TCTC, which should've indicated town store tax collector, so I should've spelled that out. The same person, it's only one, she gets an hourly rate. Deputy treasurer, you have two deputy treasurers in town, there's no rate on there because neither one of us get compensated for that position. And the medical director was just an oversight, so we will add that one. Health savings account, please clarify the differences in the disbursements. Some get annually, biannually, and weekly. Why is the difference in how it's paid out? That's gonna be based on your personnel policy. If, once somebody becomes eligible, there are increments in the policy in how often they get it, so that, you know, brand new employee doesn't get full year's worth. That would be easy to answer in an email. Why haven't we paid vault life association? It appears all donations have been paid. An answer for that. Don't know off the top of my head. And job descriptions. We received eight job descriptions. Are we correct to assume that these are the only positions who currently have them? We just need to review which eight, see which employees are missing, and get you an answer. So, you might have half of them by Monday, but the treasurer, it's just not...
So, assume that you're probably not gonna get them all by Monday.
Yeah, I mean, I can get you probably more than half, but she is finding the W2s and 1099s out, and that just has to stay priority.
Well, that's fine, Jen, I just, you know, you could've just sent me an email, and we're not gonna be able to get it all and be done with it. We do have a meeting on Monday, and probably, with any luck at all, we're gonna set our budget, schedule timeline, and come up with a list with the dates that we'll wanna meet with different departments, so that it gives everybody a chance to, it probably won't, I don't know this, 'cause it's up at the committee, but it probably won't start until probably the first of March.
That's fine.
And that'll give everybody a chance to, 'cause you had said, when the budgets come in, that we'll be able to get them. And it'll give the warrant finance a couple weeks to look them over and, and come up with some questions, hopefully, for the departments.
Okay.
And if there's any questions before we meet with them, we'll just send them out, send them to Jen, and then she can just pass them on to the department head. Does that work?
So, the budget's due on the 17th, so the board will start looking them right after, and then we'll probably come up with a list.
Okay, good.
It works.
Well, let me, let's take a look at your calendar, and we'll align it with our efforts to make sure everything is lined up here.
Yeah.
I had to answer your question without having seen that, so...
Well, we have the selectmen's budget schedule.
Yeah, yeah.
And we have the school's budget schedule. So, what we would do is fit our budget schedule within those, within yours.
I thought you were asking me a question, though, about, and I wasn't quite sure how to answer that. I wasn't quite sure what the question was.
Okay. I just wanna know what we're gonna do, like, doing our budget schedule and forwarding the questions that the committee might come up with for the different departments ahead of time.
Yeah, that's great.
To make it easier on the department, so that when we meet with them, hopefully...
They'll have the questions in advance?
Yes.
Great.
And they're not gonna have them all, obviously.
That's always helpful.
They're obviously not gonna have them all, but I'll try to do my best to do it that way.
Very good.
Okay?
Thank you, Dennis. Okay.
Citizens' email.
Citizens' email, building fees. So, Jennifer, you wanna?
So, this comes from Mr. Arnold Murray. So, good morning, all. I guess I'm late for input. Some land use fees were increased recently. I have reviewed meetings and can find no deliberation on the merit for the increase other than being in concert with Chapley, as stated by the CEO. Would you explain to me and the taxpayers what the need for the increase is? Chapley has seventeen items on their fees page, Acton 43. Why are we trying to generate more revenue? The land use department received approximately one hundred sixty-four thousand in 2021, fifty-eight thousand over anticipation. The town has over five million dollars in surplus from excess budgeting, and we are increasing one fee fifty percent and thirty-three on the other. I recall the tax increase as fees for services rendered in a tax is to generate revenue. I don't understand why it's necessary to increase the cost fifty percent to the taxpayer. It seems that we are making the land use department a profit center, and I hear the transfer station is next. Why are we raising the cost to the taxpayer in advance for your answer?
Well, I, I believe you can go back, he could go back and probably has looked at the tape. I think there was a little broader discussion about that.
It was.
Where Jason had come in and done a survey of other towns and what their fees were.
Is he scheduled to come back next week to fill those one rooms?
Yeah, that's fine. So, I, I'm not quite sure what the question is there, other than, he has a point of view, which I understand, and that's fine. But, I don't know how, I don't see a question so much as an expression of a point of view and opinion, which he's entitled to do.
It was more of a statement. That sounds like we're overtaxing. We got way more money than we should have. No duh. You know, we all know that we have an issue right now, that we got a new revale coming.
Yeah.
We know we have issues with our tax rate. There's gonna be, you know, we gotta figure out what we're gonna do with our surplus funds, okay? But, that, he's incorporating the whole thing into, the code office is our slush fund, which is not the case. But, when you're looking at, we wanna, we wanna, we wanna stay competitive with the other towns, what everybody else is charging. That's why he came up with us. That's why he came to us. We allow public comment, daily, dollar short. Probably sure came up and expressed those during that point in time, three weeks afterwards. But, I believe the code officer had good reasoning why he did what he did, and the other concerns we'll take care of.
Kim?
I think it's all been said.
Okay.
You know, I mean, Jason did come up and, you know, talk with us. I mean, we've had meetings about it.
Was it like we just say, he showed up, said, hey, you know?
Right.
Why don't we raise a couple bucks on this, a couple bucks on that, we'll call it good?
We wanted to be in line with other towns, yeah.
And we gave everybody an opportunity to, if they felt this was a good idea, you know, he may have been able to convince us different. But, code officer did a very good job, and I believe the way he did was right.
I think there's a, there's a, what I'll call an underlying philosophy here, that, as I considered that item, that I thought was important. And that is that we wanna maintain our fees, our salaries, et cetera, to be comparable, compatible with surrounding towns that, that we have next to us. And I think that's a good principle to adhere to. I personally don't think it would be wise to let our fees fall materially below other towns, any more than I would believe it would be good to let our salaries fall below what other people are paid in other towns. I just think it's a basic principle that, to me personally, makes a lot of sense, and that was the reason for doing it. That was it. And whether we have, you know, more revenues than we need, et cetera, I think, you know, David said it, Kim has said it, we all understand that there is a surplus, and I think that's one reason why I would like to see some enhancement in our budgeting process. And I think the, this particular firm can go a long way in helping us with that.
If we can figure out what our surpluses are, we don't even know what they are.
Yeah, I mean, it's...
It seems, he seems to know more about our surplus than we do, so, at this point. But, you know, at the end of the day, when we, when we, when we actually figure out what our numbers are, and we can actually sit down and start figuring exactly what we're gonna do about our tax rate.
Yeah.
And what money's gonna go where. And, 'cause I believe, right now, with the assessments that we got, we made, by talking to the assessors, there could be a large drop in the tax rate this year, possibly, because of the revenues that we're gonna be bringing in. And with the monies that we have now, you know, Tom's talking about, well, I guess we are, about investments and this and that, we're looking for other avenues. But, at the same time, we're in a very good spot in the Town of Acton. Most towns don't have the problems we have. We have a low tax rate, lots of money in the bank, and the charges that are going on downstairs, what was the number, a hundred and what?
Well, it's 2021, he indicated.
I know, but just throw me that number, that he threw out there.
A hundred and change.
Okay.
Hundred sixty-four.
Hundred sixty-four thousand. You know, by the time you, you pay the health benefits, the wages of those people down there, you know, and those numbers fluctuate.
Well, he did, I did share that with the CEO. He indicated that majority of that was premium roads, that was a one-size project.
Yeah, okay, but...
I understand permits are down, I don't know.
Yeah.
So, we may.
You know, next year, I mean, we could, you know...
Things are slowing down.
You've gotta look at the revenues downstairs, the last three to four years, the housing market has been booming, so that's gonna be great. We may come into a recession where downstairs may not be bringing in any revenues.
Yeah.
So, so, you know, I think we're going along with what the other towns... So, so, you know, I think we're, we're going along with what the other towns are doing, and I think it's just the right thing to do.
Okay, I think we've addressed that. Okay, certificate of deposit maturity notice.
So we received a notice from Parker's Bank, just indicating that the hundred and eighty-two day certificate that we have on file with them is maturing on some, on February eighth. The certificate will automatically renew the new maturity date on August ninth, twenty-three. The new rate is not yet determined. This is a ninety thousand dollar CD that came with escrow from the solar project on Petra. Now, it's balanced at ninety-two, eight seventy-four.
So what are we being asked to do at this point?
Just rolling over.
Information that's rolling over, unless you tell us otherwise.
And when's the, and I, how long of a term is the CD?
Hundred and eighty-two days.
I personally would not do that. I think CDs, I don't know what they're giving as a rate, but my guess is it's, it's not what I would call a market rate for what you can get, risk-free money to earn these days. So if we have to renew it, I would go.
We don't have to.
I, I mean, we're going to be looking at investments more generally for the town, and whether there's an opportunity to invest our cash reserves in a different way, and that may create an opportunity to do something with these monies as well. And if we can get a higher rate of return, I think we have a responsibility to this escrow owner, to make sure that that's, that's gotten a, a good return.
Because any of the interest goes back to them, right? Not, not the town?
Yeah.
Okay, I just want, right.
No, but I, I mean.
No, I agree, I'm just saying, I'm wondering, I mean, I don't know the legality, I mean, we're supposed to take that out to them? You know, we're only allowed to hold the ninety thousand, that's what we requested.
Okay.
So the escrow agreement doesn't cover that?
I don't know.
Well, let's take a look at it.
That's why we got to stop doing this stuff.
Yeah, yeah. Well, let's, let's find out with the, I, I know the earnings won't come to us. I, as, as a escrow agent, which is, I think, what we are in this transaction, I think we have a fiduciary responsibility to make sure that they're getting a reasonable rate of return on their money. And if they're only getting one percent and one and a half percent in this environment, when, you know, treasury bills are paying four-plus percent, risk-free, I, I think we just need to consider that.
Okay.
Should we have the, the company that put the escrow up, shouldn't they be involved in that at some point?
I, I think that's a great idea.
Because, I mean, as a town interest, like me, I don't care. Because I don't think we should be doing this anyways, but I think if we're going to do anything, we just keep rolling it over, let it go, unless the actual individual says different.
I, I, I differ from that, but we, we entered into a contract, rightly or not, to accept this escrow. So we, I want to look at the agreement, but I assume we have a responsibility to make sure that those funds are properly managed. And if we, and if, if we're going to invest it in something that doesn't produce a kind of return that, you know, other investment, risk-free investments offer, I, I just think that's something we ought to know about and be conscious in doing. So I would just renew it for thirty days until we figure out what we're doing with our investments more broadly. We may just leave it where it is, we can talk to this organization, but quite frankly.
It's their money.
It's their money, but we're holding the escrow, and if I understand, I'd like to see the agreement. The agreement will stipulate what our obligations and requirements are.
I'm not surprised, there's going to be a simple motion to require ninety thousand dollars escrow carry.
Oh, okay, well, okay, that's amazing. That's amazing, yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
For your. This will be before your time, but I was going to ask, do you know if the town has ever sort of done a comparison between treasury rates and CD rates? Because my perception is that we're only investing in CDs, and I've often wondered why we aren't buying treasuries.
I don't think, I, I don't think until the last year, there was, there was any difference. And in fact, CDs probably paid more than treasuries. It wasn't until the Fed started raise, raising rates, and my recollection, that was about, you know, it was about a year ago, maybe a little more than a year. And at that time, CDs paid more than what treasuries would pay. And it's really about July or so where they crossed, and treasuries now are paying significantly more than what you can typically get as a CD rate from most local banks, so, but it's something you got to look at all the time, and, and we're planning to do that. For your request?
So I'm from Arnold Murray, good morning. I'm requesting an expense summary report for two thousand and twenty-one as a dot CSV file. This report can be generated in the Harris Trio software in the budgetary system module. This is a standard report that is not customized. If the treasurer is not familiar with the CSV format, just save it as an XLS file and email the file to me, regardless.
Okay, any, I assume we'll be able to comply with that? Very good.
Spelled out how to do it, though, that's good.
Yeah. So, investment policy, that's something we've talked about, and we're going to circle back. We had a proposal from TD Bank, I'm working on another one from Schwab, and hopefully we'll have a couple of proposals and may, I don't know if we can get them here to come, my guess is not. They'll probably submit a proposal, and that's, that's what you're going to get. Anything on West Shore Culvert?
I haven't heard a thing.
Okay. Website bid presentation?
Next week, Dan Lee and.
Okay. All right. Facility assessment, next week. Budgets due February seventeenth.
Cover it up.
Okay.
Ooh, we got stuff on the back.
We got notices or announcements.
Announcements, all right.
Want to take a look at these?
February second, we're going to have a planning board meeting at six P M. February sixth, warrant finance at six P M. The eighth, we've got a select board meeting at six P M. Thirteenth, capital improvement committee, five P M. Thirteenth, conference conservation, I can't talk tonight, forest committee, six thirty. February fifteenth, we got another select board meeting at six P M. February sixteenth, planning board at six P M, and the twenty-second, we have a select board at six P M.
Thank you. I think I skipped over public comment, although there's been a lot tonight. Is there any additional public comment before we adjourn?
Do you have a question?
Sure. Yes.
Under this proposed budget for the services that we're talking about, has there, has the question been asked of the town employees as to their preference of either weekly or biweekly rates? Being that there's a different charge from this company?
We currently have a weekly payroll, and I.
We haven't discussed it.
Haven't discussed it yet. I.
We're at the beginning of everything, really.
Having converted an employer from weekly to monthly or biweekly, that can be issues. There can be issues associated with that. So something we'd have to talk about, and quite frankly, I, I think the employees might have a, some input on that as well.
And I think that the conversations that we have kind of had individually, they need, we need to leave the payroll in-house.
Right.
We still have a treasurer that's still qualified to do a lot of things, so we're, we're thinking, what we're hearing as employees on the side is that the payroll will stay in-house, so nothing will change, so we're kind of.
I, I would like to see the payroll stay in-house, of course.
So they're going to have a lower rate.
So a savings of twenty grand?
Yes.
Or twenty-five grand? All right, awesome. And I realize that once, if this passes from the general public, there had been some mention of duties and responsibilities would be changed for the treasurer. I'm sure at that point in time that the job description will be made available.
Yeah, sure.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comment? Okay, motion to adjourn?
Make a motion that we adjourn?
I'll second that.
All in favor? Have a good night, everyone.